The April 21st, 2020 regular meeting of the Glen County Island Planning Commission. In an effort to adhere to the guidelines set forth by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention for the COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting is being held via video teleconference. The public has simultaneous access to the meeting. The meeting will be streamed online for public viewing through the Glen County Board of Commissioners' Facebook and YouTube pages. Commissioners, remember to mute your microphone when you're not speaking. Staff will control the PowerPoint presentation. Please do not scroll or control the slides on the screen during the presentation. We're going to start the meeting with a roll call, just for the record. Commissioner Kate is here. You can answer it when I call you. Commissioner Di Palito?
Here.
Commissioner Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Ragsdale?
Here.
Mr. Torres?
Here.
Mr. Rooks?
Here.
Mr. Rooks? Commissioner Rooks?
She says she's here.
All right. And Commissioner Willis is here. Janet Loving, Secretary?
Here.
Staff, Will Worley?
Will Worley's here.
Staff, Stephanie Lee?
Present.
Are there any other staff available? All right. Under General Business, the first item is to approve the minutes for the regular meeting held March 17th, 2020, subject to any necessary corrections. Commissioner Ragsdale, I think you've got something?
Yes, on the, in the third paragraph on page two, which is BP 4293, the third sentence in that paragraph, the word exterior should be interior.
Got that. We made that change.
Oh, okay. And then I'd also like to add a sentence at the end that says, "The applicant indicated that the new building would be occupied by his family and would not become a rental."
All right. Any other additions or subtractions? All right. We can entertain a motion on these minutes with the additions. And if you'll state your name, whoever's making the motion.
George Ragsdale, I move we approve the minutes as amended.
All right. Is there a second?
Yes, so let's second.
Commissioner Rooks seconded. All right, we'll do a roll call on the minutes. If you're in favor, say yes. Commissioner Kate?
I'm not there.
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Ragsdale?
Yes.
Mr. Rooks?
Yes.
Mr. Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Willis, yes. All right. Thank you. This is a unanimous vote. First item is from the Village Preservation, BP 4265, 516 Oak Street. Considered Design Review Approval of a New Single Family Dwelling Unit at 516 Oak Street, St. Thomas Island. Parcel number 04-15082. Property is on Village Residential and Island Preservation Design Review District. Kevin Higgins, agent for Monty Yim and Elizabeth Ann McDermott owners. This was deferred from the February 18th to March 17th, 2020 IPC meeting. Ms. Lee?
Great, thank you. Stephanie Lee, Planning Manager.
Mr. Chairman, before Stephanie starts her presentation, this is George Ragsdale. I'm going to recuse myself.
Yes. All right. Okay, Ms. Lee.
Before we begin, can everybody see the presentation on the screen?
Yes.
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 Yes. Great, thank you. Okay, hold on a second. Okay. So before we begin the presentation, I just wanted to state this for the record. There is an updated link for the live stream of the meeting tonight. The live stream link that was in your agenda has been changed. So this link was updated on the website homepage, the website calendar today, and was sent out to the IPC members. And I just wanted to put this into the record that this was a change. So the first application is BP 4265, 516 Oak Street. And this application has been deferred two different times from the Planning Commission meetings. You all first heard this on the February 18th, 2020 meeting. And you heard it again on March 17th, 2020. And it was deferred again to this April 21st meeting. So I'll just kind of briefly go over a few things and go over some of the changes since you last saw this. So just as a refresher, this property is on Oak Street, near the corner of Demery Way and Oak Street in the Village Preservation District. And it is a two-story, single-family home. Some of the changes that they did include since last time you saw this were some changes to the site coverage. They are meeting the 50% rule at this point. And it does, that does include pervious and impervious and pervious services as defined in the zoning code. They did state that they have lowered the height of the porch. They also lowered the overall height of the building to 25 feet tall. And it is a one and a half story building at this point. There's only one room that's on the second story. And they did, there was one bump out of the house that was shown in the previous iterations of the plans, and they have removed that. And there are a number of photos and maps that were included in your packet that show what the existing homes in this surrounding neighborhood look like, how many stories they are when they were built, and the lot sizes. Just a few photos of the property which you have seen before. And this is the plat and a survey of the property. And these are, this is the updated plan. And these are the updated floor plans. And this is the new elevation as well. This is the map that shows the surrounding lot sizes and the homes in the surrounding area. And these are your stands of evaluation for the Village Preservation overlay. These are your possible actions. And these are your possible motions. Know that the applicants, as well as their agents, so Mr. Kevin Higgins, their architect, is here tonight on the call. And Mr. and Mrs. McDermott are also here on the call for the virtual meeting. So if you have any questions of them, they can chime in. And I'd be happy to answer any questions as well.
All right. Does anybody have any questions of staff?
Joe, I have some questions. This is Patrick. Stephanie, thank you for that zoning map that you provided. I think that shows, gives a good indication of what's R9 and what's R6, correct?
Right. In terms of actual lot sizes, even if the zoning is R6, it might be a larger lot. But yeah, that does give a good indication of overall lot sizes in that area.
Okay. I'm looking at the site plan sheet. If you want to put that up or go along with me. This lot is actually Lot C of the original three lot configuration, correct?
That is correct.
And when we talk, so really, I think I saw someone in there. Does the back part of Lot B, is that now part of Lot C or does that? I'm a little bit confused. What's the, what's the actual lot now?
Right. So the actual lot, yeah, this property has been replatted a couple of different times. Or it's been, it was replatted through a minor subdivision. And let me see if I can get back to that. Okay. So this slide kind of shows you the historical. So 1950 Demery Oaks plat. So this property, lots one and two, at the corner of Oak Street and Demery. And then in 2004, they did a minor plat. So that's how they created A, B, and C. And then just a couple of years ago, lots B and C were replatted, not through a minor plat. It was basically a survey shifting the lot lines. Because at that point in time, that's, we were allowing shift of lot lines through a survey process. And so Lot B did become larger and Lot C became smaller. So Lot C is now the 6,700 square feet.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for clarifying that. My question is about the 50% coverage. So does that include the driveway, the stone driveway? Is that, is that in the permeable area or impervious?
So yeah, under the, under the definition of site coverage in the zoning code, we do say pervious and impervious for this particular definition. So when we have the 50% threshold, you know, in the Village Preservation or the Village Residential zoning district, it does include, it does include the gravel driveway. So that's really, they had to, I'm sorry, no, it does not include the gravel driveway. Now, I'm sorry. Let me back that up. So it included the driveway and the patio. But if they, I know they had made, I'm sorry, hold on a second.
So I see the driveway is loose gravel. Is that right?
Yeah, let me just refresh on that definition real quick to some.
You mind if I chime in? Kevin Higgins, you mind if I chime in about this?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Higgins.
I'm Kevin Higgins, the architect and agent for this project. The way I understood the site coverage, it did include pervious and impervious. So it, so in that, in that figure is the gravel driveway. As pervious, but it was still included in that 50%. What we did change is the straight run of the driveway going back to that gravel. We just made basically what they call a ribbon drive, which is just pavers where the wheels hit and then grass in between. So that's, that's how, that's one of the ways we got the site coverage down.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, and I'll chime back in. Thank you, Mr. Higgins. So the definition, yeah, is correct. That is the percentage of development area covered by the ground floor area of buildings and structures, parking, driveways, walkways, pools, patios, decks, mechanical equipment, and other similar improvements, whether permeable or impervious to water. So as Mr. Higgins said, what they ended up having to do was to add in more grass, grass areas that were not, you know, that are not considered, you know, walkways, parking, or driveways.
Right. Okay. I've got two or three other questions and, or comments, and I'll address them to you, Stephanie. But the architect, you may defer to him. I noticed the scale of the drawings are quarter inch. Of course, we have miniatureized copies of that, so I'm not able to use the scale. I noticed in the elevation sheet of the front of the house, you put, you put it there, I think, comparing the adjacent property. Trying to show relative massing. And I'm a little bit confused. On the McDermott's structure, where you show the heights of the roof, you've got approximate mention. And yet, this is a scaled drawing. Can you clarify that? Stephanie or the architect?
Yeah, if I can ask.
Yeah. Yeah, it's approximate. I mean, it may be, you know, a couple inches either way, based on framing and things like that. But based on wall sections, that's what it should be, given, give or take, you know, a few inches, not a few feet, put it that way.
Okay. I'm not, I've never seen a drawing with approximate mention for a structural aspect of it. So when I, when I, and when I look at the neighbor's adjacent property, you have approximate quarter inch scale. And I recognize you probably don't have the draw.
Yeah, that was completely based on photographs and just.
It looks just, let me carry on, please. It looks just, the neighbor's property looks, it looks out of proportion. Both of these are quarter scale. So just a comment about that. But, and I'll also say, I recognize you and the owners have done a lot of work to address some of the concerns that were raised two months ago. And I appreciate that. One of them was the height of the finished floor, or in this case, the porch, the front porch. And I think the owner mentioned in their email of Sunday that the porch is now approximately two feet above grade. Is that accurate? Because when I count the porch steps, it looks like about five steps, which in most cases, that's like three feet, is it not?
Yes. Yes, sir. We, we dropped it about two feet, but it's a little, it's more, it's a little over two feet above finished grade.
Okay. Yeah. So it's really about three feet above finished grade. Sorry, I got interrupted.
Yeah, that's about right. Yes.
Okay.
Lower than what it was. Yes.
Let's not confuse this, because the owner stated it's two feet off the ground, but it's really three feet, correct?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. All right. What, there was an issue about a fence, a proposed fence. Is that still being proposed to be eight feet?
No. The fence is gone.
Okay. All right. Or it will be built later.
Yeah, it's gone. It won't be built, according to the owners.
Right. Okay. That was, those are my questions or comments, Stephanie. Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, do any other commissioners have any comments?
I got a question. Michael Torres. Mr. Higgins, you've done, I know you've been here, this is the third time you've come here, so I know this is getting mighty tiring. I don't mean to make this more difficult. I don't know if this is a typo or not, but I'm looking at your site coverage calculations. And it's like you've got total site coverage of 3,386 square feet. It shows that's 50%. But when I'm looking at the lot, it's showing 6,736 square feet. Which half of that is 3,368, not 3,386.
Well, it's a tenth, tenth of a percent or two tenths of a percent above 50. We rounded to 50.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I was reading that correctly. That's all I have.
All right. Any other commissioners? Any comments? All right. Mr. Higgins or Mr. McDermott, the owners, would you all like to make a statement or any comments?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I tried to rework the plans to address all your concerns. I dropped the house down. I know my neighbor's house is 27 and a half foot, because I used a laser and measured it. And I really worked hard to be her same height. And then part of my roof, of course, is now down to a little over 25 feet. I really tried to get the square footage down. I tried to get the mass down as you looked what my neighbor's mass was. And with the houses around there, I think, a house smaller than mine, I think, really fits in. I don't know. If there's any other concerns, I'll try to answer your question. If there's any other concerns, I'll try to answer your questions.
All right, Mr. Higgins, do you have any comments?
No, I'll just answer any any more questions. We asked that that it be passed this month, be approved.
Well, I'd just like to say I want to thank Mr. McDermott and Mr. Higgins for the work they've done. They you've gone far and beyond, I think, what we asked for two months ago. And I know you're under a deadline and hopefully this the owners of your the house that you sold, if we approve this, so you can get this under construction and be able to move into it in a timely manner. But I want to thank you for work. We've asked we've asked projects to go back to the drawing board before, but I've never seen anything go back like this, and I just want to thank you for that.
Yeah, well, you know, and and if I do say something, I, you know, I've always been a real person concerned about neighborhoods, and I've collected antiques my whole life, that's a whole side note. But what I was going to say, when I first walked the neighborhood and looked at our plans, unfortunately, I was looking at some big two-story, full two-story houses on Mayo, and I was under the assumption that they're sitting there, I could draw something similar. And of course, later I found out you guys really didn't have any input into that. And so I am, I get where you're coming from. That's why I made the big adjustments. And and to be honest, I think this house fits better into the neighborhood. So I will admit it, so.
Thank you. No other comments, commissioners? Would anybody like to entertain a motion?
Michael Torres, I may make the motion to approve application VP 4265.
All right, is there a second? Commissioners, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Who is that? Samantha Dupolito, second?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. All right, I'll call the roll for the vote on this motion. Commissioner Kate?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, approved.
Commissioner Dupolito?
Yes, approved.
Commissioner Duncan?
Approved.
Commissioner Ragsdale has recused himself. Commissioner Rooks? Commissioner Rooks? Commissioner Torres?
Approved.
Commissioner Willis, I vote yes. Ms. Loving, can you get Ms. Rooks on the line? Commissioner Rooks? Ms. Lee, do you know what happened to him? Went off in La La Land?
Yeah, you want to hold just a second? I will go check, hold on a second.
All right, we'll wait on her to have a you have her to record her vote. Just hard to trust technology sometime, isn't it?
Just doing that. Good for that. Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Okay, okay, approved. Oh, yes, approved.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. The vote was 6-0 approved. Congratulations, Mr. and Mrs. McDermott.
Congrats, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, commissioners. You'll be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to the site plan approvals of SP 4271 yacht club lot 13. Consider site plan approval for a portion of an outdoor pool and patio to encroach into the required 25-foot marsh setback set forth in yacht club plan development, ZM 2376. The lot is 10,000, 018.8 square feet in size and located at 213 Yacht Club Drive, Saint Timmins Island, parcel number 04-14555. Property is owned by Plan Development District, Jackson Survey and Agent for David E. and Melissa J. Ramba, owners. All right, Ms. Lee?
Thank you, Stephanie Lee, Planning Manager. This is SP 4271 Yacht Club Lot 13. And this is a new single-family dwelling unit with a pool and patio. So this is the property in Yacht Club subdivision. So it's accessed off of King's Way onto Yacht Club Drive. So where the star is located is the property on the marsh. And you all typically do not see single-family homes come before you, with the exception of single-family homes that are in the village preservation overlay. But in this situation, the Yacht Club subdivision has a 25-foot marsh setback that is part of the plan development text. So this setback is more restrictive than than the Department of Natural Resources marsh setback or marsh buffer. And so this has been in the plan development text and was also a plat note that was on the plat as well when the subdivision was done in 2013. So basically, what the plan development text says, and I do have an excerpt of the text that I'll I'll go into, but basically, anything that has any improvements that are in that 25-foot buffer from the marsh do require site plan approval from the Islands Planning Commission. So that is why you're seeing the site plan for a single-family home. The home is outside the setback, it's just the pool and the patio that are within it. So they do have a bulkhead at the marsh and approximately half of the pool and a few feet of the patio are are proposed to be encroached, encroaching into the marsh setback. So there's a few different buffers that could apply to property that's on a marsh. And in this scenario, and like I said, they do have a bulkhead at the property, and it is you have a Coastal Marshal and Protection Act boundary line that was established by DNR. That's basically right at where the bulkhead is, at the edge of the marsh and upland. There is a state statute that that basically takes and takes this lot into account. Certain, so basically, if you have a lot where 18% or greater of the developable area of your property would be would be taken up by a 25-foot buffer from the CNPA line, then that buffer would not apply to that property. And this is for for properties that are that were platted prior to December 31st of 2015. And so Yacht Club was platted prior to that date. And this particular property, if you were to take in the 25-foot buffer from the CNPA line, that would be a 19.8%, that would be 19.8% of the lot. So that so there's no state required buffer on this property. So that being said, the plan development text, though, for this property is more restrictive and does have a 25-foot buffer requirement. And that there's really no other. So that this is basically just what what it says in the PD text. Whether there's a bulkhead or not, is a 25-foot buffer. So this is the section of the plan development text that that discusses the buffer and that the building needs to be outside of it. However, improvements are also are subject to site plan approval by the Islands Planning Commission. There's also a plat note that's on the yacht club subdivision plat recorded in 2013. This is plat note number 17, which states that following the property is subject to a 25-foot buffer from the CNPA jurisdiction line and the King's Way right-of-way as defined in the PD zoning text. So this applied for the whole subdivision. Some of the properties do front or do have, you know, are along King's Way. And so there would be a 25-foot buffer there. This property is not on King's Way, but it is on the marsh. So that 25-foot CNPA buffer applies to them. So the property is under construction, so the house is under construction at this time. There have been no improvements started on the patio or the pool. However, the building is under construction, and they did get a residential building permit from the county. And this is just a copy of the plans that were submitted for the residential building permit. So it does show that at that point in time, you know, they, the house did meet the 25-foot setback. So there's mentioned about a 25-foot buffer, and they are showing that that the porch and the home are outside that buffer. So a few months later is when they came in to to request the pool, and and we informed them that there would be site plan approval that would be required for that based on the PD text. So this is a site plan that they did provide. And I do have an excerpt on the next slide that's a little more zoomed in. So this just shows kind of zoomed in of the of the buffer area. So you can see this is the rear of the house with the porch and patio. And in the circled area is the portion of the pool and patio that do extend into the buffer. So about half the pool extends, and then just a very small corner of that patio extends into the buffer. There's just some photos of the site. So this is looking at what has been constructed on the property with the house and the area that is shown that's cleared. This would be where they would do the pool and the patio. And that black fencing that you see, the erosion control fencing, is right at that bulkhead and CNPA line. Just another view looking in the other direction. And then just standing kind of out at the house, looking out towards the marsh. And this does show where the bulkhead is and where they have their erosion control fencing. So these are your possible motions, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. And for representing the applicant, David Dowdy from Jackson Surveying is on the line, and Mr. Ramba, the applicant or the owner of the property, is on the line as well. Thank you.
All right, commissioners, any questions of the applicant?
Joe, so I have a question from from Stephanie, for Stephanie.
This is Commissioner Duncan.
Yes, yes, thank you. When the building permit was applied for, was this site plan included? And was the pool in that permit request at that time?
So Commissioner Duncan, no, the pool permit was a separate permit. So when they applied for the building permit, it was just for the house. And we do have some correspondence with them, you know, letting them know that that the pool and patio would have to, you know, be be taken through a separate process if they wanted that to be in the buffer. So the residential building permit was just for the house, and then then separately, they applied for a pool permit.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Just the the issue of the 25-foot rear setback that's in the PD text, was that established because to address any state waters issue that that we now know do not apply? But is that is that was that the original emphasis? Or do we not?
No, that that is a good question. There have been some changes to the state statute, you know, since that PD text was done. So I, you know, at that time, I I think, you know, there was, you know, more thought that, yeah, that 25-foot would be applying from the state. I know there's some other language in the PD text that does talk about view shed, so so not as much really an environmental setback in terms of environmental, but but more of a view shed. So along King's Way and along the river, you know, I think they just wanted buildings pulled back more from the water. So so when you're coming across the Causeway or you're along King's Way, you're not right up against buildings.
Right, okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question, I guess, but I'd like a clarification.
George Ragsdale.
Sorry, it's George Ragsdale, maybe from Stephanie or from Will. The way I read that PD text, it says that no building will be allowed within that 25-foot setback, the 25-foot buffer. And and the house is not within the 25-foot buffer. But when I look at the sentence after that, it says that any additional improvements are only subject to our approval. It doesn't say that additional improvements also must be within that 25-foot buffer. It must be outside that 25-foot buffer. So I just want to make sure my interpretation is correct. The fact that the pool and the patio extends beyond that 25-foot line is not something that's disallowed by the PD text. It's the way I interpret it.
All right, any other comments?
Commissioners, this is Will Worley. Just to confirm Commissioner Ragsdale's interpretation, he is correct. Buildings are excluded from the 25-foot buffer. Improvements are not. It's just that they have to get your approval through the site plan process for improvements within that 25-foot buffer.
Commissioner Torres, I read that something?
Yeah, so, yeah, thanks for bringing that up, George. So the use is clearly allowed in the PD text. And we're they're just coming in front of us for us to give our blessing on the already allowed use?
They are coming to you to allow that use within that 25-foot buffer.
Okay, so Carla Kate, so that is not an allowed use. With just to restate what what you guys just said, there's not an allowed use within this 25-foot buffer.
They're saying it is.
Well, normally, when we use the term allowed use, what we mean is it's a use the property can be put to. This is more about the placement of that use, not whether the use is allowed or not. So that, yes, it's an allowed use on the property. The question is, well, the the posture of this is, is the PD text allows them within the buffer, but only if you give site plan approval. So really, what you're asked to do is look at their site plan and judge it based on the merits in 619.4. So I guess you could say that it's an allowed use in the same way that any other application for a site plan is usually for an allowed use on that property. You're reviewing the design of it and the placement of it on that property.
Okay, again, in saying that, since over half of the pool is within that 25-foot buffer, is there, and I guess I'm speaking to the owner slash builder, is there not another configuration you could do to where it wouldn't go over so much into that 25-foot buffer? Because I also, you know, we have to keep in mind people in lots next to you, such as lot 12. So like, you know, neighboring views and everything. Is there so is there not another configuration that could be done so that so much of the pool is not within that 25-foot buffer?
And this is Dave Rambo, if I'm allowed to speak.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Rambo.
Thanks. We did take some of that into consideration. We have shared our site plan and the landscaping plan of the lot 12, who's putting in a five-foot fence and fairly heavy landscaping. So looking towards lot 12, I don't think we'll see anything but a wall of trees. It's heavily landscaped, and she's putting in a five-foot fence between the two properties. So I don't I don't foresee any sort of view corridor issue, anything. The only view corridor that that may be impacted is what she's creating on her own property on lot 12. If you if you look to where it would shift towards your lot, actually, two lots over, that that could be could be done properly if we shifted it. But if you're looking at that, you would then, which it really isn't shown on this, there's an outdoor shower on the backside of the porch. And that outdoor shower would be pretty far distant from the pool if you kept shifting it over towards, I guess, you'd be lot 15, Ms. Kate, if you kept shifting it that way. The land does fall off to the lot 14 between our two, and lot 14 doesn't have a bulkhead. So it would require some more construction to build up that end of the pool if it was going towards lot 14 instead of where it's at directly behind the porch.
So you're saying if you extended it all the way to the left, if I'm looking at the site plan, where patio is, bringing it more out of that 25-foot buffer, you would have to build up higher?
You'd have to have a wall there.
Right, right.
And if you can see right there to the next of it is one of those big great inlets. So the further you move, that's why you'd have to build a wall there. Because you couldn't parade to the to the drainage inlet. You'd have You'd have to, which currently we're going to grade towards inlet and the end of the bulkhead, which occurs right at the property line.
Right. What is, what about as far as moving the pool back touching to the porch area? Like, is it flush with the, I mean?
I can answer that. It's, I was told the ADA requires a four-foot walkway. Disabilities Act or some sort of access. So you couldn't have it directly up against there. That's, that's the required minimum amount that you have to have between the structure and the pool. And that's a building code requirement, not a site plan issue. But I guess the building code requires you to have a certain width, and I believe that's four feet.
And so what is that distance there from the porch that looks to be more than four feet?
No, that's four feet. That's what I was told. I can't, I mean, I don't know, my version's pretty small. But I was told during the site that it was four feet. I don't know if David Dowdy's on the phone, who's the engineer, but I think that's four feet.
I just, you know, I just hate that you, I mean, if this had been on the initial site plan with the house, with the building permit, you probably wouldn't have to be here. Everything would have been corrected at that time.
But I started construction and probably would have delayed the start of the construction on the house until February 25th. And we started in December on trying to get on your all's agenda. And we applied for the pool permit in January and actually have a building permit for the pool. But I didn't want to move forward on that building permit that we already have in hand until after we made sure that there was nothing, you know, that would impair what you guys are wanting to do as well.
Right. Now, what I meant was, the pool wasn't on the initial house plans. So, and from what I understand, the building permit for the pool was issued in error. So I was just trying to.
The building permit was on the initial house plans.
No, no, no.
We submitted it without, oh yeah, it was on the original. Yes. But because of the timing, we resubmitted it without the pool in order to get the building permit for the house. Then the pool contractor submitted a permit and received the building permit for the pool and was beginning to start the pool. And we told them to stop because we still had to go through site plan approval with, or through this process with Island Planning Commission. So it was on the original. We took it off to get the building permit for the house, knowing that there is a delay in everything going through anything between, inside the 25-foot line. And then the part that sticks out there, I think, is the minimum that's allowed because of that four-foot walkway between the patio and the proposed pool.
So this same layout was on the initial site plan for the construction of the home?
The initial building permit for the home. And then we pulled it back and resubmitted it without the pool. So we could do this separately through the planning commission. Otherwise, we'd been two or three more months behind.
Okay, Stephanie, any comments? I had discussed that with you a little bit because I was kind of confused as to, you know, the permits.
Yes, I, yeah, I can address that. So, yeah, when we look in the file for the building permit that was issued, I mean, the plan that was approved by our department and stamped as ready to build, our construction plans does not include the pool. So I can't speak to, you know, what the plan may have looked like when it first came in. But I know that's what was, you know, was shown in our files. But I know we did have communication though, you know, for several months back, letting them know that the only way anything could happen in that 25-feet buffer was, you know, was going before the IPC. And of course, you know, there's, with any application, there's never a guarantee of what the outcome will be. So it's always something to keep in mind that you may or may not get approval for that.
This is David Dowdy. If I could just mention for Ms. Kate, the original site plan that was turned in did have the pool on it. And they were not going to give them the building permit because of this buffer that's in the PD text. So they asked them if they pulled the pool off. And while they were working on it, could go ahead and pull the building permit and begin construction on the house and then work on this as they went along. And that's what, that's what they ended up doing.
That's what I needed.
This is Commissioner Willis. Let me ask a question of, if you saw that originally before any construction was started, was there any discussion about moving the house back toward the street to get it out of that 25-foot buffer? I mean, I'd imagine they're giving you a variance on that end instead of on the marsh end.
Well, there's a, there's not a opportunity for a variance on the front setback. There's the permissive approval of the IPC in the marshland, but there's not a permissive variance in the PD text from the 20-foot from the front of the house.
Is that in the PD text at 20-foot? So you're saying, you're saying that on that front side, we can't give a variance, but on the backside, we can?
Well, you're not actually giving a variance. Yeah, this isn't a variance in the back. This is allowable to meet the 15-foot requirement from DNR. Instead of the more restrictive, it's not even restrictive. It says you can build improvements, just not structure inside 25-foot. But we have to go to the IPC for review of that.
I understand that. Well, we've given variances all mostly down in, from commercial properties and the village preservation. Usually they encompass maybe a foot or two feet. But when I look at this request, I mean, if it was just a foot into the pool, I wouldn't have a problem with it. But it's half the pool. And we would be, basically, we're, you know, we're basing all this on the neighborhood PD text. So it seems to me the best thing to do is go back to the neighborhood and try to get the PD text changed to allow for it. To, because it says the 25-foot's not required by this DNR. But, you know, we've been criticized by giving variances. And this right here is, I've never seen an encroachment on a setback line like this on anything. And I've been on this thing going on my, it's been my sixth year. So I've seen a lot, but this is the biggest, this is the most egregious violation of a setback. So I'm just stating the facts.
Chairman, I got a comment. The PD text says that the intent of this buffer is to provide a veiled appearance of the development from the causeway. A pool and patio is pretty close to grade. I don't think it's going to block the view at all from the causeway. It's going to, it's going to follow the intent of this PD text. It says no building shall be allowed within this buffer. I feel like they're complying with the intent of the PD text. I think trying to ask the community to get together to, to re, which would essentially be a rezoning to amend this PD text is a tremendous undertaking. And I don't see that ever happening. I think it's, I think they're following the intent of the PD text with this pool, personally.
Well, any other comments?
Yeah, George Ragdell. Is a fence required around this pool?
No, sir.
This is Stephanie. I, yeah, unless the applicant, yeah, can address that, I would need to check with our building official on that particular requirement.
There's no plan to put a fence around the pool?
No, sir.
Okay. I agree with Commissioner Torres.
All right, let me ask a question of the applicant. If you're looking at the site plan, which I, do you see that, Mr. Rambo, the site plan?
Yes, sir, I do.
The lot to the left of you is vacant, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And there's a house to the right.
It's under construction as we speak.
Where would the pool equipment be for the pool if you, if this pool goes in?
It would be on the, to the right of the patio up against the wall.
And that five by five by eight?
My point is, if you could put it on the left side, looking at this site plan, where any future owner would know that pool equipment is there before they start their construction. Since there's already a house already under construction on your right, it seems to me it'd be a neighborly thing to do to move it.
Mr. Chairman, can, I'm not clear what the owner, what he described, where is the, where's the equipment proposed now?
Mr. Duncan, I'm trying to pull that, see if I can pull the plans up real quick.
It doesn't appear to me there's any room on the left side or the west side of the house.
Is it on that five by five by five by eight pad? To the right of the porch?
The, I have the original site plan pulled up. And actually, the pool equipment is listed at the corner of the house there beside Lot 12, the house that's under construction. I don't know, we would have to talk to the builder to see if that could be moved. But I'm not, I'm not sure.
Well, it looks to me like there's room on the left side next to Lot 14. You've got a patio there and a proposed patio, but then there's also, what, seven feet in there too?
In the setback area?
Talking about setbacks, aren't we?
Well, I think that's a utility. I mean, that's a drainage easement. And I don't know what.
Patio around, I'm just trying to see if it could help the neighbors.
Well, and again, back to this, back to reconfiguring the pool. So there's not so much into this 25-foot buffer that is in the PD text, where, you know, every person in the, who has purchased a lot in here knows that. So will anyone that goes within that 25-foot buffer is going to have to come before us?
That's correct. Anyone who wants to put improvements in that 25-foot buffer will have to come to the IPC for site plan approval.
And Commissioners, this is Stephanie. I did just have a chance to ask our building official, Ellis Carter, about the fencing requirement. And he states that a fence is required around the pool. So that's not shown on the, on the plan, but that would be required.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lee. All right, any other questions, comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman's Patrick here. I'd like to just.
What happened? Did we lose Mr. Rook?
Yes, I have a question for the applicant.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Correct me, I thought I understood him and say that initially, before the pool, in order to get the permit for the construction. So if that was the case, what changes came about in order for him to get the permit now for the pool?
You would have to ask the building department who gave him the permit. I have no idea.
Okay, but my understanding you say that you were told to pull the permit. So you were told to pull it in order to get the permit for the construction. Then I'm wondering what changes have come about now to get the permit for the pool?
And Commissioner Rooks, this is Stephanie, I can address that. So, so when they receive their building permit, yeah, there was, you know, they were aware because there was correspondence and discussion about the 25-foot setback. And so that's why the pool could not be approved, that it could just be the house. However, when they did come back in to apply for the separate pool permit for just the pool, it was erroneously approved. We did check into it and unfortunately, in the system, it shows as approved. But there was, you know, verbal and email correspondence, you know, with the applicants that the site plan was required. So, you know, this pool permit had been erroneously approved in January. Within a couple of weeks of that, the applicants did submit their site plan application, you know, for the pool to go before the IPC. So they are, you know, very well aware that that was a requirement because they did end up, you know, submitting for the site plan. So unfortunately, our system didn't capture that change. But, but that permit, you know, should not have been issued.
Okay.
Commissioner Duncan, did you have a comment, a question? I can't hear you. You'd need to unmute.
I'll read over the Glen County pool regulations in regards to the fencing that was just discussed. It does say that a barrier fence will be required around the pool. And then from my understanding, like the applicant said earlier, you have to have the four feet around the outside of the pool. And then will be a fence. And then on the outside of the fence is required to have 36 inches before it's, a 36-inch clear zone before it's next to a building. So that's seven feet from the pool to the building is going to be required when you have a fence, when you add a fence in there, which is going to push the pool out or reduce the size of the pool.
Although in theory, Michael, they don't need to have a fence on the porch side of the pool. They just need to have it on the other three sides, right? As long as it ties back into the house.
I think it's around the entire pool. It's for kids and everything else, too. It's not just the neighborhood out.
Okay.
So that goes further back into the setback?
Or reduces the size of the pool.
Right. Any other comments? Questions? All right. Will? Anybody? Yes? Who is this? I'm sorry, I can't hear.
I don't hear anything.
No. All right. Entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to to approve the applications, SP 4271, subject to them adding a fence and complying with the Glen County Pool Regulations.
For a second. Next, Commissioner Torres would make the motion. Anybody making a second?
I'll second it, George Ragdell.
Mr. Ragdell seconded. All right, there's a motion to approve with, to apply to the Glen County Pool Regulations. And a second by Commissioner Ragdell. All in favor?
Page hold, discussion first, please.
Yes, we'll have discussion.
It's George Ragdell. The only thing I'd like to add, Michael, with your permission, would be that the, and it goes back to your point about, you know, the unobstructed view. I agree, they ought to add a fence, but I think the fence ought to be of a design that is, I don't know how to say it. We don't want an opaque wall put up there. We don't want an opaque fence put up there. We want a fence that's going to. there, we don't want an opaque fence put up there, we want a fence that's going to allow people to see through it. I don't know how better to say that, but we want to make sure that the fence is not something that obstructs the view of anybody looking past the pool.
Okay.
Discussion?
Yes.
Again, this is one of the, I feel like another one of the situations where we put all these stipulations on something to make it work when it clears, goes against PD text,
Okay, any other discussion?
Yes, Odessa Rooks, I think, you know, with me, for approval, everything should be in place. We give approval with intentions that the applicants will do, will do, will do. And I think we should have something in writing from the applicant stating what will actually be done.
Right. Any other discussion? Ms. Loving, can you restate the motion? Michael, can you do them?
Yeah, I'll restate the motion that I moved to approve the application, SP 4271, subject to them adding a pool and complying with Glen County regulations. And just to comment on George's comment on my motion, the, the fences are pretty well spelled out in the Glen County Regulations of what they can and cannot be, and there's four-inch spaces in them, and so it's pretty well-defined in what you can and can't do for a fence.
Right. Commissioner Ragsdale, you fine with that?
I'm okay with that. I think to, to deal with Commissioner Rooks's concern, though, if we really want to see it in writing, we probably ought to defer this and ask them to come back with that fence specified and shown on the drawing.
And this is Carla Kate, and that's going to change the layout of the pool. Am I correct?
Yep.
Well, we've got a motion on the table and a second.
Will, will, can I withdraw my motion and make a motion to defer?
No, sir. Once the motion has been made and seconded, it's open. Y'all, y'all have to take care of it some way or another, vote it, vote it up or down. I guess theoretically you could make a motion to withdraw that motion, have a second, and y'all could vote on that.
All right.
They must vote on it.
All right, you made a motion to withdraw. Is there a second to withdraw the motion? Who seconded?
No, he, he didn't make a motion to withdraw, Joel.
We got, we got a vote on the first motion, Joel, sorry.
Okay, we'll load on the, the motion to approve motions and the second by Commissioner Ragsdale. I'll call the roll. Mr. Kate?
No.
Mr. Dipolito?
No.
Mr. Duncan?
This is Stephanie. Commissioner Duncan is on the line, but he, his microphone is not working, so he could probably enter into the chat his vote if that would be okay. Will, is that okay?
Yeah, I would suggest that he record his vote in the meeting chat.
All right, does he know how to do that?
And I don't know if anyone has a way to take a screen capture of that, but that would be good for us to have a record of that as well.
Yeah, I, I can take a capture of that. I will, I will make sure he knows how to do that.
He's already responded.
Has he? Okay, great.
What's, has he responded? What's his vote?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Commissioner Duncan? I mean, Commissioner Ragsdale?
No.
Commissioner Rooks?
No.
Commissioner Torres?
No.
Commissioner Willis?
No.
Okay, can I, can I make a motion to defer this application to our next meeting? So the applicant can add the fence and adjust the pool size?
What is that date, Ms. Leaf? May?
So that date would be?
June 16th.
May 19. Yeah, May 19.
May 19. I make, I make a motion to defer.
Motion to defer, May 19th?
May 19.
Odessa Rooks?
Second.
Ragsdale second. Need discussion? Call the roll. Kate? Mr. Kate?
Defer.
Commissioner Kate?
Can you hear me?
Now I can.
Okay.
Motion to defer, what is your vote?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Dipolito?
Yes, defer.
Commissioner Duncan? We'll find that one out. Will, if you can let us know.
Yes.
All right, I don't see that for some reason.
The chat on the left-hand side of the screen, you gotta click a button.
Ragsdale?
Yes.
Rooks?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Willis?
Yes.
All right. It's deferred until May 19th. All right, thank you. Okay, next, next item is SP 4301-C Island Wardrobe Facility. Consider site plan approval for the development of a new 3,500-square-foot employee wardrobe changing facility at the C Island Employee Parking Lot at 1,500 Coquina Circle, St. Simon's Island, parcel number 04-14220. Property is on plan development, ZM 1754 Old Stables Track PD, Wesley Franks' agent for SIA Propco 2 LLC applicant and owner. All right, Ms. Leaf?
Thank you. Stephanie Leaf, SP 4301-C Island Wardrobe Facility. This is a new 3,500-square-foot building on the existing site. And this map shows where the property is located, so it does, it does run along C Island Road, and the address is Coquina Circle. So the site is located in the Old Stables Track Plan Development, and the property, it is an existing parking lot, 4.69-acre C Island Employee Parking Lot, and it's located on 11.46-acre lot within the plan development. And there currently is an existing structure that does serve as the employee wardrobe facility, and it is at the southeastern edge of the parking lot, pretty close to C Island Road. And they will be demolishing the structure when they are ready to construct and utilize the new facility. So the purpose of the wardrobe facility is for the C Island Company employees, and they will be able to drop off and pick up laundered uniforms, there'll be storage of uniforms, fitting and changing areas, seamstress and sewing area, and then there's also an internal waiting area for employee bus drop-off and pickup. And in terms of the allowed use, Section 4.0i of the plan development text does permit a wardrobe facility for company employees, because it is considered to be part of the other similar uses which support the operations of C Island Company. So this is a photo of the site. This is a bus shelter that you can see constructed here in the photo, and then behind that, the area that's fenced off, that is the project site. Another photo of the project site. And in this picture, you can see, looking, so you're looking back towards the Island Road on the property, so on the right, the fenced area is the project site, and then further back where the arrow is pointing, that is the current wardrobe facility that will be demolished when the new one is, is ready to use. This is their site plan. And just kind of another note, where the existing facility is, is closer to C Island Road, there's a heavy tree buffer between C Island Road and that, and that building, but the new site is further within the parking lots, is about 100 feet away from the current site. And it's pretty well kind of buffered and isolated with the parking lot and other vegetation around the parking lot. They are required to have a tree plan for the St. Simon's Tree Canopy Preservation Ordinance, and so this is a copy of their tree plan, open soil area, and the chief protection fencing. These are the elevations of the proposed building. These are your possible motions, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And then Wesley Franks from Robert Civil Engineering is here as the agent representing the owners of the property. Thank you.
Right. Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff or Mr. Franks?
I do, Odessa Rooks.
Okay.
Okay, my understanding that this would be a wardrobe facility only, well, will, I guess, uniforms or wardrobe be made in the facility, purchased there, you know, or just for fitting or changing clothing or what, you know, I just have some clarification there.
Yes, this, this Wesley Franks, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, the, the wardrobe facility is basically going to be a uniform storage, and then for, for personnel or employees that work for C Island, depending on where, where they're, who they work for, what department they work in, they've got different uniforms. So basically, they will have uniforms stored there that will be tailored to, to fit the employee, which is the reason for the fitting area. There will be no laundered or laundry services here that's taking place off-site. The uniforms from the employees will be dropped off to get laundered or either picked up from being laundered. And then also, what Ms. Leaf mentioned as well, there is a waiting area inside and actually an area outside on the porch as well for, for bus pickup.
Okay, and I noticed you have seamstress and sewing areas, because I did see the Singer and Kenmore sewing machines, so that would be for stitching or fitting to make sure the uniform is fitted correctly?
Yes, ma'am, and repairs as well.
Okay.
This is, are you finished, Ms. Rooks?
Okay, one other question about, okay, about how many at one given time will be able to go into the facility?
Well, I, I know from the site plan, they have got three stations. I'm not sure as far as capacity there. I'm sure at least three due to the number of stations. I, I don't know how many they typically there, but there is a decent-sized waiting area inside and outside, but for sure, at least three at one time.
Okay, what are the hours that they will be able to go in and out there at the facility?
I, I'm assuming it would be normal business hours, eight to five, but I would need to clarify that with, with C Island as far as. Okay. Yeah, I believe Gaitian or C Island is on the line as well. Then you're correct, Wesley. It would be typical business hours typically. It might be a little bit earlier, it's probably closer to 7:00 AM and a little bit later into 6:00 PM, depending on the time of year.
Okay.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Torres, I'm looking at your tree plan, and at the top of the first, top of the second page with your analysis and calculations, you have development area at 4.69 acres. The tree ordinance says that there are 12 large canopy trees per development acre. So that would be 52 and some change trees based on your development acres you've got here.
And the, the development area is only used for the calculation in the previous or the, the site coverage, the project area, which is what we've defined as the boundary on the site plan, which I believe is. I believe it's .4 acres, if I'm not mistaken.
That's what you said, the project area is, yeah. But just, I mean, the, the words you use, exactly the words used in the tree ordinance, which would require 56. I know that's not what you intend, and that's not what you're doing, but it is what the tree plan says.
Yeah, and again, we're not developing the whole area, that, that development area that we've got, that, that's 4.69 acres, that should have been not included on there. The project boundary is just .4, and, and that is basically the square box that you see, and that is really not even inclusive of the entire development area, it's actually even less than that. So we've limited to just what we're doing here. I understand that the, the available development area is 4.6, if you look at the upper side, but what we're looking at, we've limited to just the building itself and the improvement surrounding the building.
Gotcha.
Are any other comments, questions? Well, hearing none. Is there anyone ready to make a motion on this application?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application. If, if they could reword this to say the development area is .04 acres, just so it doesn't come back and bite us later on down the road, someone saying that we made a, did a favor for C Island. We have 0.4. I'm going to approve the application if they amend the tree plan to show the development area is .4 acres.
Second, George Ragsdale.
Yeah, second in the motion. Any discussion? All right, I'll call the roll on your vote. Commissioner Kate?
Approved.
Commissioner Dipolito?
Yes, approved.
Commissioner Duncan? Somebody says?
Um.
Let's see. Commissioner Duncan?
He's typing. He approved.
Okay. Commissioner Ragsdale?
Approved.
Commissioner Rooks?
Approved.
Mr. Torres?
Approved.
Commissioner Willis, yes, approved. All right, unanimous. Is there any other business? Any other business, Ms. Leaf?
No, there is not, thank you.
All right, folks.
Could you send out an updated project list? We didn't get that this time.
Yes, sir. I will email that out to everybody.
And Ms. Loving, I'll sing, I'll scan my notes and send them to you tomorrow.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
You'll have that for the record. I want to thank everybody for this exercise, and, you know, it wasn't so bad, was it?
We made it.
We'll probably get to do it again next. Well, and hopefully the next month or so, we'll be able to get back together in person. So no other business, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.